Hi Mike, can you hear me, Michael?
I can.
Great, how are you?
Uh, I'm doing okay, how are you?
Good, good. Thanks for all of your work, it's like, beyond, um, I appreciate everything that you've done. Um, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Michael, you're a little quiet, can you move your mic closer to you?
How's that?
That's a little bit better, thank you.
Uh, let's see, I'll do my, I'll change my mic, see if I can get my mic pretty louder. Oh, I know why.
There you go, how's that?
That's better.
Yeah, it's on the wrong setting. Thank you. How is everybody?
Good, ready for an exciting evening. If I start drooling, please wake me up.
The high point, the high point for me is gonna be the message from the chair, I've never seen that before.
Wow.
Yeah, I hope it's inspirational message. So, yeah.
While we're waiting, what's, what's happening, Michael?
Oh, the big news is our cat died today.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was very sad, he was around for about fifteen years.
That's a long time.
Yeah. He died in the kitchen. Every other cat we've had has gone out in the woods and not come back.
So, I'm sorry, what was, uh?
His name was Scribbles.
Scribble?
He was a good guy, great hugger. You did like, real human being hugs.
Wow, with, with his paws?
Yeah, like this. It's crazy, looks like a little baby.
Oh. I'm sorry.
Sorry to hear that, Michael.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. How are you, Nathan?
I'm doing well, how are you?
I'm doing alright, like your shirt.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say, I bet your kids were upset to hear the news. Or maybe not, I don't know.
No, they, they were, you know, they get older. One texted back and said, "That's sad, I'm at work," you know? So, I'm sure they're sad, just not getting the communication part.
Well, at least he responded to you.
That is true.
I'm sorry. How about anyone else? How's, how are you Keith and Tom?
I'm good, and my dog just walked by, so the, the dog is still alive, so.
That's good.
I could add that, um, our dog Carl got through his second annual vet check okay with us.
Yay.
We've only had him for two years, he's about five years old, but last time we had to give him like sedatives beforehand and they actually made him jumpier. And, um, they heard him crying like almost in the parking lot when they cut his nails in the vet's office. Not today though, he was really well behaved, it was great.
Oh, good.
No nail clipping.
How big is he?
Seventeen point eight pounds. Point five, so we got a little reprimand for that.
And Nathan, did your, um, did your kids survive being taken care of by, um, was it your parents or your wife's parents?
Tom, Tom meeting was my parents, so yeah, they, they did fine with that, everyone was okay with that, so, uh, you know, that worked out well.
Yeah, good, good.
So it looks like we're a little thin on, uh, on full members here, we may have to, uh, take advantage of our newly, uh,
Oh, oh!
Invoked, uh, home rule.
How cool!
Yeah, yeah, um, I'm, my computer is so slow, I'm, I'm trying to get connected on Zoom and I was gonna try and at least, uh, you know, would someone pick up the phone and, uh, call Deacon if you have Deacon's number?
I will.
And does anyone have, uh, Steve Bressler's, uh, number?
I, I might.
I might be able to text him.
So while we're waiting, Carrie, how are you doing?
I'm doing okay, how are you?
Okay, any news with you?
Um, not really, I wish there was.
Yeah. This is not, uh, okay, well, I think at this point, okay, I got the Zoom meeting.
Steve is on his way.
Okay.
And Deacon didn't pick up.
And, uh, can you hear me now?
Wait, ten.
Okay, good, I can hear everyone, alright, so, uh, alright, Steve is on his way, um, Deacon didn't pick up.
So she have, she can deep shows up.
Right, and, um, okay, Steve is here. And for the time being, I will designate both, uh, Keith and Tom to, uh, to sit in.
Oh, and Ashley's here.
And Ashley's here, okay, so now it's, uh,
We got everyone.
Now I'm gonna de-designate both of you because I don't wanna have to flip a coin. So, uh, hopefully Deacon will show up and, uh, you know, if we have a tiebreaker, then we'll, uh, better it out. Okay, um, Ashley, welcome, can you hear us? Okay, alright, it's seven oh eight, I'm gonna call the meeting of the planning board to order. My meeting is being recorded. And, uh, the, uh, first item of course is the, uh, message from the chair. And, uh, I can promise it won't be, uh, often that I will, uh, subject you to these things, however, I feel moved to, uh, deliver a statement regarding the following, uh, statement, uh, follow-up questions will be ignored, person's attempting to find motive in the statement will be prosecuted and person's attempting to find moral and it will be banished. The chair's statement for children and parents of children is a quote from Kurt Vonnegut's Slaughterhouse Five, page seventeen. "I have told my sons that they are not under any circumstances to take part in massacres." And that "news of massacres of enemies is not to fill them with satisfaction or glee." That is all. Okay. The next item on the agenda is, uh, this is the final regulatory, regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board for fiscal year twenty twenty four. As such, at the next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be the second Monday of June, uh, Carrie, you have your hand up?
Thought fiscal year starts July first. So, the last one being the June one?
Oh, yeah, you know what, um, it's only May? Okay, thank you, thank you so much, Carrie, so we can just ratch that item, okay?
This was just a test.
We've got one more, one more regularly scheduled meeting in this fiscal year, okay, so heads up everyone. Okay.
Make it good.
Okay, we're gonna make it good, alright, um, alright, moving on to the next one was town election results, so, uh, big congratulations to, uh, to Ashley, who is now a fully elected, uh, member of the planning board. And also, uh, you know, congratulations to Jeff Weston and myself for being re-elected to three-year terms. Alright.
Ashley was so excited, she disappeared.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know if that affects functionality at all.
Oh, wow.
So we're okay, cause we, we still have six members.
Yes, yeah. And we do have, we, you know, we have a, a quorum with four members and we'll have more as needed. Uh, hopefully, uh, Ashley will be back in a moment. Um, is there anyone here for public comment? No, okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Uh, landowner education and guidance, if any, I don't believe I see anyone for that, but I do see Mister, uh, Bernard here, and I believe that, uh, since you're here and since we got so late, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bump the, uh, item I have, uh, at seven ten, which we lack special permit, uh, brought by Keith. And we'll move on, um, uh, before we start doing that, Ashley, welcome back.
Thanks, sorry, I don't know what's happening, but it seems like I'm here now.
Well, that's good, and, um, you know, now that you're back, I do wanna just make a quick, uh, note, uh, congratulatory note on your being elected to a, uh, as a full planning board member in the, uh, town election we just had, congratulations.
Thank you. Official.
And so, yeah, you're, you're, you're PB official now, that's good. Okay.
Thanks.
And, uh, we're, we're gonna bump, uh, the, uh, the we lack special permit, uh, agenda item, uh, because, uh, we're gonna move on to, um, the ANR for, uh, three oh nine Montague Road, uh, three fifteen Mo- Montague Road. And I see that, uh, Jerry is here, hi Jerry, welcome.
Jerry.
Thank, thank, thank you for coming, um, so, uh, I am going to share my screen so that we can look at this.
Hey Nathan?
Yes.
Just for the record, it's Gary Bernard.
I'm sorry, I, uh, I'm good. I said Jerry, alright, sorry.
Name you something and then call you something else, that's what happens. Um, my first name is John.
Oh, okay, well, I, uh,
But I'm Gary.
Sean Gary. Well, um, my apologies for, uh, the mix-up on the name. Um, alright. Alright, can everyone see my screen?
Almost.
And I can adjust the Zoom as well.
There we go, we got it.
Okay, there it is, alright. Okay, so I'm gonna start by zooming in here a little bit. Um, so this is Montague Road. And we have a parcel A here to be conveyed to, uh, ANR parcel not to be considered a separate building lot. Revised lot fifteen. Revised lot sixteen. Well, uh, I guess that to help us, uh, if you wanna, uh, John, Jerry, would you like to, uh, explain a little bit what, uh, what you need to accomplish with this to help us understand what we're looking at?
Yeah, let me, uh, a, a little bit of background, um, you know, we, uh, we bought a, uh, one acre parcel, um, with a house on it that was built in nineteen sixty and nineteen eighty-three. And then we put, if you can scroll down a little bit, I can show you, uh, what happened. A little more, down to the, yeah, our house is, uh, in that blue, um, triangle there, our house is, uh, it says just three fifteen on it. But that little, um, little box to the right of it is a screen porch that we had put on about, uh, fifteen years ago. And, uh, the, uh, the builder, uh, apparently didn't, uh, check out, I mean, there are a couple of problems with this, this whole thing, but didn't, didn't check out the property line, and so our, almost all of our screen porch is, uh, is on the land of three oh nine. And so, uh, we, um, the, the buyer in three oh nine, uh, was perfectly happy to make these changes, to put in, uh, cut out a little rectangle of his property, so our screen porch would, would be on, on three fifteen. And, uh, and then we, uh, we bought another five acres in, um, nineteen eighty-seven, and, and then he would have the same amount of, of, uh, of land, uh, from that parcel that we bought, um, so long ago. And, uh, so in order to do this, we have to fill, fill out a Form A, uh, we both signed it. Um, the surveyors did, I think, a great job. And, you know, we're both happy with, with the resolution, I should also say that, that unfortunately, we're, we are, uh, leaving Chutesbury, uh, after forty-two years in town, uh, just cause we can't do the stairs anymore, but, um, we, we, um, you know, we, so we're, we've actually had a, uh, had a bid and, uh, that we've accepted. And, uh, so we'll, you know, we'll probably be closing, but either by the end of this month or by the first week in June. So we had to get this settled, uh, to make sure that we, um, got this taken care of, so that, uh, you know, in the, in the future, we would have a, a new plot plan that was accurate.
Well, that, that was a very concise and helpful, uh, explanation, uh, I was able to follow that. Um, was everyone else able to follow along with that, uh, basically what we've got going on is, um, this portion we're looking at here, right, this, uh, this is the deck, right, it was on, uh, the land of the, the neighbor, number three oh nine over here. So this area is going to be conveyed over here to, uh, Bernard. And then this is the, uh, other, other lot that was, uh, purchased, right, and we have this section that's in gray here. You can see these lines here indicate that this section, uh, not a separate building lot, right, is gonna be
Right.
um, conveyed over to the owner of, uh, three oh nine, what does it say, uh? Um, Benettoni, I don't know if I pronounced that right. Okay, so, um, the, the plan does not show a subdivision because it does not, uh, you know, uh, create any new lots that do not have adequate, uh, frontage. Um, it's just moving a little bit of land from one, one lot to another and vice versa. Uh, so I, uh, don't see any reason that this would not be, uh, approval not required, does anyone have any, uh, thoughts to the contrary? Does anybody have any questions?
I just have a statement.
Okay.
Gary, you will be missed, thank you for your service to town.
Thank you, Michael, it's really, um, it's, it's really been a very hard decision. You know, I loved living in Chutesbury and I love being, you know, connected, uh, to the town and, uh, so it's, we're getting used to it, but it's, 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 uh, it's been a while.
We're hasn't, you're still on recycling committee, so thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna be handing out bags up at Lake Viola in June.
Well, we, uh, we all wish you the very best of luck in, uh, in this next, uh, phase for you and, um, and again, you know, as Michael said, thank you for your, uh, long service to the town.
Thank you, thanks very much.
So Nathan, I'm happy to make a motion, I just wanna clarify, is the ANR for three oh nine and three fifteen, right, cause it's swapping? Is that how to do the motion?
Well, you know what you could say is that, uh, let's just, we can, we can just take a quick look at the paperwork, um, just, uh, so, this is, uh, okay, so you could say, uh, approve of the, uh, you know, ANR jointly submitted by, you know, John, Gary Bernard and, uh, Brian D. Benettoni, um,
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll move to approve the, um, ANR for three fifteen Montague Road and three oh nine Montague Road on behalf of John Gary Bernhardt and Brian D. Benettoni.
I'll second that. Thank you, Steve, uh, any discussion? None, alright, then I will call the role. Um, uh, Dick Era?
Hi.
Hi Croft?
Hi.
Bressler?
Hi.
Weston?
Hi.
And I'm an I, uh, motion passes unanimously.
Just have, I just have one more question, do I need anything from you guys?
Yes.
I do, okay.
Yes, um, I can, I can make it into town hall on Thursday. And I can, I am authorized to sign, or basically to endorse these plans on behalf of the board. Uh, so once I do that, then, and then you can pick them up and, or, or, uh, you or your neighbor, uh, can pick them up and cause them to be recorded as needed and, and, and do what you will with them.
So, so this is what I need to give the lawyer, in other words, our lawyers, yeah, okay, and you're gonna be there on Thursday?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can go in at some point on Thursday, it'll probably be after ten o'clock or so when, uh, Carrie gets into the office and I'll just sign up, you know, I'll just endorse the plans. Has, has, has payment been made?
Uh, the, uh, payment has, has been, the three oh nine is closed. So that one's, that, that one's sold, ours is, uh, in the process now, we have a, we have a bid. And, uh, we're going through the closing process now.
No, I, Carrie?
Yeah, his, the fee was paid and everything, things all set. Um, I did send out an email that I won't be in the office this week, but, um, Becky and Grace have a key to the Becky and Grace have a key to the, um, office and, um, you'll see his on the desk. Um,
Yeah.
Just make sure you leave two of the paper copies behind, one for us and one for the assessor.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can do that, so, um, yeah, I, I will just get down to, uh, the Town Hall then. Um, I'll probably get there on the earlier side, uh, and I can, um, send you a quick email if that would be helpful.
Yeah, you just tell me when you're gonna be there, I'll meet you there.
Okay, um, me. I, I, I could plan to be there, uh, around, uh, let's say nine o'clock?
Sure.
Alright, I'm just gonna make a little note in my calendar. Hey, that should be good.
Okay, I'll see you then, nine o'clock on Thursday.
Sounds good, um, and, uh, I'm just, uh, yes, that, that should be fine. And, uh, if something comes up, I'll, I'll just find a way to get in touch with you, just, you know.
Okay.
But that should be, that should be fine.
Uh, thanks, everybody.
Bye, Gary.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
Alright. Very good, very good, um, okay, so. Alright, we'll go back to the other item, uh, Wheelock Special Permit, um, uh, Keith actually, uh, emailed me about this, so I just figured I would throw it on the agenda, um. He was wondering when the last time anybody took a look at the, uh, the, the Wheelock site with respect to, you know, the special permit conditions, there had been some work that had been done there and so on and so forth. Um, I'm, uh, mostly, uh, hands off on this, though, I, 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 uh, I'm comfortable just putting it on the agenda and, uh, you know, Keith, if you wanna make a few comments, if you have any questions or?
Yeah, I, I've, is the, the special permit available, is it posted somewhere that, that the public can look at what the permit conditions were? Um, and then, I mean, is that, I, I assume that's a public document, there's no proprietary information on it. Um, and then I know the Concom did a visit. I think it's probably been four years ago, five years ago, when they did a, a visit. And I just wondered, again, if, if it's written in the special permit that they have to, or they will, uh, let us inspect the property, uh, to see that the drainage structures are working properly and that the vegetation has taken, uh, and again, I just uh, think somebody from the town should give it a once-over. I know we, we get the annual report from them, but they're kind of brief, uh. And I don't know, did we get the report for last year? Yeah, so we, we're still doing a report, and then I think, again, it would be good for, for either planning board or maybe in, in, in tandem with the Concom, uh, take, take a walk through the site and just see what's, uh, what's happening. Did we not get a report?
I think we did. I didn't look at it, but I'm, I believe it came in through email.
Did you send it to, it got sent to all of us?
Oh, maybe?
I think so. I remember replying to the woman who sent it and CCing you in the email, Nathan. I can check in my email to see when it came.
Yeah.
And if, if it's not forwarded to everyone, I will.
And about how long ago was this, Ashley?
It's been some months, I think. Maybe, let me check, I'll, I'll chime back in.
Yeah, the reports due to us by the fifteenth of each year, so I'm guessing it was probably like late February or March, if it, if it came. They're, they're not timely, um, but while Ashley's looking, I can just sort of respond to Keith's other question, if that makes sense. Um, so Keith, I think it was somewhere with the last two years, I don't think it was last year, that we did a joint, um, site visit, both the Concom and the Planning Board for exactly the reasons you're talking about, because, uh, the, I always get the the actual term wrong, but it's the, it's the, the, I wanna say retaining area, but where the water comes down.
Detention, retention, I, I get them mixed up too.
Yeah, so that spot where it's supposed to catch the water, um, was not functioning correctly, so Deacon and Jeff and I, I think, were the people from the Planning Board, and Omeriam came. Maybe Penny, um, for the Concom, I'm not exactly sure on the Concom, I know Miriam was there. But it wasn't working correctly, so we went, they did some interventions and I think Jeff went back afterwards to find out if it was working, but, you know, it, it has been at least a year, uh, may, probably eighteen months or so, so it, it seems reasonable and, you know, the trigger was, we got the report and we had questions, so I, you know, there's, we need, we need to be accompanied on there, and they have to give us permission, but there's, but we have the right of inspection. Um, so I think if we can find the report, and either way, we wanna just sort of, since there was historical issues, there's no reason we, we couldn't set it up. Uh, and I guess, you know, two other things, I mean, Ashley was the point person this year. But, you know, if you, if you have a particular interest in Ashley, you know, wants to flip it over to you, you could probably, you know, set that up. Uh, and then the last thing was the, the special permit, I don't think is posted, it should be. I've got a copy, so I can put it on the website, because it is a public document and it's worth looking at, um, so I'll make sure I do that the next couple of days, so it's there.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we could, again, because there's still every now and then, community interest publish those, uh, again, I, I assume those reports they give us every year are not, again, any kind of industry secret, that we can post those just so the public can see what's going on behind the fence, uh, and I, I've never been out there, so I'm curious to see what's going on behind the fence. Has anybody else visited, or anybody else interested in visiting to, to take a look?
I'll, I'll go again.
There, I was there back when Michael was talking about when the Concom and Planning Board did a joint visit. And Michael, it was probably about eighteen, eighteen months ago.
Okay.
Um, and Concom should have a report as to the conditions we found back then. Gary?
I could go through my emails and see if I can find it and forward it.
The report?
Well, if Concom did, like, write down a site visit form, then I should have seen it in Concom if Miriam did send it to me.
Cool.
So, so I just did the annual report for twenty twenty-two, right, which went through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And I understand it correctly, there was follow-up actions that took place during that year. Uh, there was a couple of times when Jeff Lacy was talking about the work that they were doing on the ditch, and they were, you know, in the road and everything like that. So if that was twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, it was probably in, uh, tw- late twenty twenty-one, early twenty twenty-two that, uh, you know, we had the site visit and went down, down there and said, hey, you know, uh, right, there was some road damage, right, and you know, that, we had some follow-up items with them at that point. Um, just to, if, if, just to help clarify on the timing. But anyway, you know. So, uh, yeah, that's, uh, take it away.
I'm not having any luck finding it, I'm sorry. I thought I saw it and then it disappeared.
Oh, the, yeah, you know, um, the report, also, I did just forward to everyone.
Oh, you got it, you found it, okay. Must have put it in a random folder. Uh, there it is. Okay, I'm definitely interested in visiting. If I could work it out.
I mean, have you, have you developed a, 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 a dialogue with whoever the site manager is that you could make the inquiry or?
Oh, I mean, she and I, it just really basic communication, Keith. I just reached out to her and said, I'm just checking in about the report, we're wondering when it's gonna come, and she responded with the report, that's it. And I said, thank you. But, yeah, I mean, I have a connection, so I could reach out to her and perhaps we could set a timeline.
Yeah. Say, you know, there's, the, the town, town officials would like to visit the site and next time they have a crew on site or somebody on site that could, uh, show us, escort us around, that I mean, I would appreciate it, I would like to see exactly what's happening there.
I also.
Go ahead, Michael.
I was just gonna say, maybe for next meeting, for our last meeting of, uh, fiscal year, we could actually have a conversation, we could have a conversation about the report, because like what we've done before is, you know, there's stuff that they're in the special permit they're supposed to report on, but, um, since this is the official document, we should just look at it and see if there's anything that we wanna, um, have questions on, comment on.
We can make sure that's on the agenda.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I, I was around when you set up the last visit and I feel like several dates were given, and then people just could go if they could go, the, the date that most people had in common. So I'm happy to try and set that up with her. Maybe just give it a start and see what she says.
Sounds great.
Okay. Uh, does anyone remember, was it a weekend thing or a weekday thing?
I think it was afternoon of a weekday.
Okay. Alright, I will do that and see what she says.
Thank you.
Yeah, Keith, thanks for bringing this up. It's, uh,
Yeah.
It, it does seem like it's something that's our responsibility to stay on top of, so.
Yeah. Alright, thanks, everybody.
For the thing. Alright. Okay. Alright, next item we have, uh, the, we really received another, uh, round of preliminary subdivision plans, uh, from Coles. And so on this one, uh, they were hand-delivered to the Town Hall on Friday April.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, right, um, so now, in the past, uh, in this situation, uh, we more or less, you know, it's, uh, we've cited um, a section of the subdivision control law, uh, eighty-one oh, and it provides some requirements for submittal. And you know, kind of going through this subdivision control law and, and looking at the plans we got last time, there's, uh, you know, the section on and, you know, I might make, I'm just gonna share my screen again, just so we can kind of, uh, look at. And I'm just gonna kind of review some of the conversations that I've had. Okay, so, this is, uh, section eighty-one oh, regulation of new subdivisions. And, uh, you know, so there's a, there's a bunch of words here, um, the piece that was cited by us in the past was, a plan shall be submitted onto this section when delivered at a meeting of the board or when sent by registered mail to the planning board. If so mailed, uh, the date of receipt shall be the date of submission of the plan. And, uh, and last time we had this, you know, I was looking at some case law, um, one example that more or less references, this is submission of a preliminary plan, approval or disapproval and recording. And this also, you know, the bunch of words on it, right, and, uh, it says also at the end here, except as otherwise provided, the provisions of the subdivision control law relating to a plan shall not be applicable to a preliminary plan and no register of deeds, so record a preliminary plan. So I, the, the case law that kind of brought my attention to this was relating to someone had tried to challenge a planning board in court over their disapproval of our preliminary plan. And, you know, I kind of wondered, well, with that, you know, kind of coming to play with, you know, what we did. Um, you know, and I did speak with, uh, town council about this. Uh, you know, her opinion was that, you know, just from kind of briefly taking a look at, you know, what I had referenced with the, uh, the case law, which I, I can probably dig that up too, but, uh, she didn't think that it necessarily translated in that way. Um, she didn't have a problem with us taking the same line as we have in the past. Um, and, but, you know, didn't give me the impression, I was, basically gave me the impression it wasn't really, uh, something that may, may, may not have been litigated, so maybe kind of like one of those things where it's just, uh, it could be considered an open question. And I just wanted to kind of like, you know, elaborate on this a little bit here. And, uh, at this point, I'm gonna hand it over to Michael, and, you know, and Michael's also been involved in some of these conversations with uh, town council. So, uh, Michael, please, you know, say, say your piece on this.
Yeah, so, I mean, Nathan and I chatted about this a bit, and I talked to Donna as well, you know, at his request. So the, the question is, uh, as Donna pointed out, and I think she's correct, you know, what is submitting? Uh, what Donna talked about with the, the section, the second one, that, that Nathan had shared with us, which is the section S, it says that it doesn't apply to preliminary. You know, my read was that it was about filing and reporting, uh, which is sort of what Donna was saying, but what Donna was clear about is there's no clear definition of submitting that's consistent. Um, the only place we're defining what submitting is is the section eighty-one oh, which is what we looked at last time and what we based our decision, and that's the one that doesn't, that says it has to be sent by registered mail or to planning board meeting. So, you know, my position that I, you know, I shared with Nathan is, I think, sending pretty much the same letter we sent last time. Uh, not, not for January, but the, the previous one, um, and I think the other thing that, for me, you know, because it could be that this, it's a little clear, unclear, but if you all remember when Tom Reedy, who's the lawyer for Coles came before us you know, earlier in the, earlier in the year, uh, he wanted to submit subdivision plans, and we had a whole conversation about he can't submit it at a meeting, because we were on Zoom, but that he should specifically send it registered mail. Um, in the end, he actually didn't send it registered mail, he sent it priority mail, but we sort of decided to sort of not split, you know, split hairs about that. But at that point, he, he didn't say, hey, look at eighty-one oh, or eighty-one us, rather, he sort of, he agreed that, like, I'll send it in. He was agreeing with us in the process, and so he is a land attorney, he deals with Coles, lots of other people, so it feels like between the re, you know, Donna's, Donna acknowledging it's not clear, but also saying that she feels like the second section is really about filing and not submission, um, and the fact that it's a preliminary plan, um, that to do what we did last time, you know, they have never submitted a definitive plan. So they always have that option of coming back in seven months and actually submitting one, uh, but it, it seems It it seems to me that based on what we did. The last time where we basically said. Technically, you didn't submit anything because you didn't present it at a planning board meeting and you didn't send it to registered mail, handing it to. The planning board clerk or the town clerk is not sufficient for to meet the the definition of submission by statute, so. Donna basically said it's up to the board to decide. She didn't want to, you know, she left it for us to sort of look at these two opposing things. Nathan and I've talked about, so it's, I think, just having the conversation about how we want to proceed, but. I guess. My argument would be, I'd like to do what we did last time because I'm sort of. Basing it on eighty one oh, which is that definition of either at a meeting or by registered mail, neither of which they did.
So, you know, probably pretty, pretty low stakes decision either way here. You know, a lot would have to happen for this to really come to a head. All I really wanted to do, you know, going back to twenty twenty three. When we first did this and that was, you know, we had a special town meeting, we had did have a zoning amendment. For a solar bylaw, which has since been rejected by the Attorney General. But that, I think, felt a little bit high stakes to us at the time, you know, we did this. You know, I don't recall. You know, looking at the language of eighty one S, so I wanted to have the discussion. And see if there was anyone that wanted to. Take a different approach or if, so, you know, if there's anyone that is interested in pursuing something different. You know. I I'll say now's the time to speak up. And if not, then, you know, I don't know, Michael, do you want to get that? Version, that letter up?
Sure, I got it right here.
You need to be made call, okay, there you go.
Yeah, so it's pretty identical. They have a new engineering firm, so it's petra tech. But it would go to, you know, Coles, into the new engineering firm. And. All this first part is exactly what we sent in two thousand and three. We can take this out. The Board of Health did get a plan. And it doesn't, it doesn't say how they're supposed to get it, so, you know. Catherine Hilton said that they got it. I didn't follow, I don't know, Carrie, if you heard about. Well, with the town clerk, it's sort of. It's also great because in their packet, they had a cover letter to the town clerk. What technically is supposed to happen is they're supposed to submit it either. At a meeting or by registered mail to the planning board, and then once that has been officially submitted. Then they send the, they can hand a letter or send a letter to the town clerk saying that it has been submitted. So. You know, technically, including a cover letter in the application packet is not after the fact, but I think that's less important. So I think it's just basically sending the same letter, which essentially says that based on section eighty one oh, they didn't submit. And therefore, we're rejecting it.
Michael?
Yeah.
A quick question. It it says they can submit it at a planning board meeting. But since you don't meet in person, what's the al- alternative to that?
Registered mail. And so if you recall, we had the conversation, Tom Reedy came to our meeting.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, and so he asked that question. He said, well. I've I've got it here, but if I can't give it to you because you're on Zoom, what do I do? And we told him, send it registered mail. He was like, okay, I'll do that. So that was, that's sort of my point, just like he wasn't saying, hey. Though these options don't meet statute, he just picked the the way that complied with statute.
So here, here's my only concern, okay? This statute was written before COVID. Right?
Right.
And so I I don't know if. I mean, I'm happy to send this letter along, but I think it. I don't know how meaningful it'll be. Because somebody could claim, well, you don't meet in person anymore, so we can't deliver it in person to the planning board. And so, you know, somebody might come up with a defense and say, because of COVID. There's no alternative to in person, so we delivered it to directly to town hall.
Well, there is an alternative to, I mean, in statute, registered mail is defined. Yeah.
I understand that, but I I I'm I'm speculating here, okay? Again, I I'm fine sending this, but I wonder how meaningful it will be to the powers that be.
Well, with this particular case, it was delivered on April twenty sixth, so. I don't know if it would be. Anything arguable against us considering the timeframe. You know, there wasn't, they submitted it after our meeting in April and before, like right in between the two meetings, so. I guess if it was like an issue, they can't come because the meetings are on Zoom and. What you're saying, which makes sense, the timeframe, I don't. I don't know that it would be a concern for this particular submission.
Yeah, I know Michael was asking some of these questions or through email about. Grace's end of it. I was wondering if you had heard from Grace at all with those questions. She ended up being. Out sick that week that you had asked, so I couldn't ask her in person and.
Yeah, I. I I assume, I I haven't talked to Grace is the the short answer. I feel like it's not as important to pursue only because, you know, there was a cover letter. In the packet, which is not really how it's supposed to happen, but, you know, going to the map on that one seems like it's it's less important than. How it actually gets, because all that they're, all the telling the town clerk is to say. Hey, town, we submitted these subdivision plans, so the town clerk is the official recipient for the town. I think the the issue that's more important is that. The subdivision plans are supposed to give into the planning board prior to that happening. And so that's sort of the the nut of it, you know, did they submit the proper way or not? And if they didn't, if they did, then. They were submitted. If they did not, they were not submitted.
Okay, I I only asked because when she had shown me the plans, which I think was following Tuesday before she left on her. Conference, she had mentioned that she had signed something for him. So I don't know if that's what it was, but I never got to follow up afterwards because then she went on a conference and then she ended up getting sick, so. I thought that was the only thing I thought was worth bringing up.
Well, there's probably a receipt.
Yeah, it's the same, it's the exact same thing that happened last time, you know, in two thousand and twenty three. You showed up, gave her the plan. She signed a receipt saying that it was received and we clarified that in fact, that's not how you do it.
I mean, Ashley, did you, you know, I kind of. Kind of abruptly jumped over to Carrie while you were, after you were done with what you said, but did you have any kind of follow up there?
I don't think so. I just was acknowledging, I think Steve. Makes a good point.
Yeah.
But I don't know. My brain at this time of day isn't super functional, especially when it comes to like dates and math, so I just don't know if it's going to be an issue. Because of the timing of this particular submission. I think they could have submitted it to our board meeting or gotten it to us by registered mail. But like clearly, the date of April twenty sixth is significant. They were trying to get it in at that point.
Yeah, you know, it's a. You know, the thing, the thing is, right, you know, and Jeff has said this and, you know, he's kind of right with. Preliminary plans, it's. You know, they don't carry a lot of regulatory weight. You know, you can do it and it's and it's supposed to be a a way to kind of get your ducks in a row for when you submit a definitive. Subdivision plan. But, you know, and obviously it also is incorporated into the provisions of the zoning act that. Deal with protections. From from new zone, right? You know, the the so-called zoning freeze. And, you know, so, you know, the kind of, you know, the question is that, you know, is this. Position I want to, you know. Going to be, we don't know, right? Basically, unless, until you go to court. And and do it that way, you don't know. If if at some point they submit a definitive plan. And say, hey, or if they, you know, maybe submit an application for something and say, you know, we have a zoning freeze. At that point, you know, we have an opportunity to talk and and make a decision then as to what we're going to do. Right? Or or we can. You know, say we're not going to do it and see what they do, see if we end up. Right, we, what happens? So it's. Anyway, we got a couple of people with their hands up. Keith, keep that your hand up first. And then Jeff. So why don't you go, Keith?
Yeah, I I guess. I don't know when that that Mass General Law was written, whether it's pre-digital communication or not. I don't know why registered mail is any high bar, especially for a law firm. That. Seems like a routine. Thing that any law firm would do daily is is send out communications via registered mail. So I don't know if there's anything. That I'm not aware of, that the hand delivering things to town hall. I I as, and I assume the Mass General Law was written to protect the towns. Somehow that things aren't going to fall through the cracks by somebody saying, oh, I dropped off. My correspondence with whoever happened to be in the front office at the time, so I I assume it's. Again, to protect us and now whether or not the town could. Could we ignore and just say, well, we'll take it like we did the last time with the priority mail, which, you know, technically is just mail. And I, and then if we do that, do we set a precedent for anybody else that's submitting something that?
Well, there's there's a signature there and I mean, you know, there's a. You know. We are quasi judicial body, right? So, you know, there can be discrepancies in how we apply things, but I think in terms of state law generally. I I. I'm not a lawyer, but probably the courts are more the ones that set the precedence on that. And then, but yeah, I mean, it's a. You make a good point that with, you know, the registered mail, it's kind of like a. You know, gift assigned for it, it's a pretty, it's a formal step.
And it really isn't difficult, so I, I mean, I'm kind of. They're they're bright people. They should be able to put something in registered mail and get it to us. Again, I'm not sure there's not, again, I have no clue. If it's just expedition, trying to be expeditious and and getting it out or or one on their part, but I kind of feel like they should. It's a pretty easy hurdle.
Jeff? You're muted.
Yeah, well, well, in my view, there's obviously a reason that they brought it on on the twenty sixth. Their attorneys, they must know why they did that, and we have to remember that they're suing the town of Shootsperry. Why should we accept it? They did it incorrectly. We should say, no, you submitted it incorrectly. They obviously, obviously thought that the twenty sixth was important. For them to do it. And they messed up again. You know, and that's what happens. I think we definitely should say, sorry, not submitted on time or not submitted on the twenty sixth. That's how I feel. Why are we being, not, why are we trying to be accommodated accommodating to someone who's suing us? That's the question I asked the planning board.
Oh, thank you, Jeff.
No reason.
Nathan, I should have been quickly.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, I mean, I think just getting back to. The the, I, Keith, I agree with you. But my read is. They don't have a very good tickler system, so literally the last three times you've had town meetings with anything related to zoning. The afternoon before town meeting, they show up and they hand it to whoever's in town hall. You know, if they were organized, they would have done it a week before. It's really not that hard, but. They end up handing it to us because they're behind the eight ball and they've done it now three times. It's and it's like clockwork. I mean, they, it's not even two days before time meeting. It's always the afternoon before. And so it's like, okay, if you're going to be doing that, do it by the book. You are lawyers. None of us on this call are lawyers, but we're reading statute. It's it seems like a reasonable and I agree with Keith. It's what they do, you know? I mean, lawyers still send faxes, you know, so. You know, it's just how they operate.
Yeah, Michael, you said that Tom Reedy was agreeable in the past. About a very similar matter. Was that for a preliminary plan or for a plan?
Preliminary plan.
Okay, then I don't see why this would be any different. I was just curious, thanks.
You know, just to kind of, kind of clarify. Especially after what what Jeff said, you know, I'm not trying to introduce any any leniency here. My goal was to bring in the part of the discussion about. The provision eighty one S that says provisions of the subdivision control law shall not apply to a preliminary plan. Unless unless otherwise provided, right? So that's kind of. It's it's not so much leniency as it is, well, because it's something we consider, right? And then obviously. Just speaking with Donna, right, you can kind of. Seemingly go one way or the other as to whether or not. This definition of submittal. Of subdivision plans is specified in eighty one oh is. Is otherwise provided or not, right? So that was just to clarify what. Why I was having this discussion, right? You know, just give the board a chance to. To roll that part of it around and to see where we land. Well, as I said before, there's no downside to sending that letter like Michael wants to do. That's really what it comes down to. Well, you know, un- unless anyone has any, I mean, I think I'd entertain a motion to move forward as such.
I'll move that we, you know, let me get it up in front of me so I can do it.
But yeah, yeah, we don't, you know.
Hold on. Let it go. Share screen. Okay, I gotta get it again. So I'll move that we send. A letter to Coles and their and their attorney reflecting that. Based on our understanding of. Section eighty one oh of Master General Law, that they did not submit. Subdivision plans per statute for. For. Subdivisions, which are Leverett West, Montague, Pratt East and Pratt West. And that the planning board sent a a letter to that effect.
I'll second.
Thank you. Now, does a. And the last letter we sent that we did know some discrepancies, I know at least some of which have been addressed, does anyone want to? Address any of that or just leave it short and sweet as Michael said? Short and sweet. All right. By, unless any further discussion? Okay, I will call the roll. Pi Croft?
Hi.
Bressler?
Hi.
Weston?
Hi.
Take care.
Bye.
All right, and. I'm going to abstain on this one.
Yeah, I think you missed Tom. Or Tom and Keith voting or no?
No, no, I, you know, I with. Yeah, I was gonna do it when we were missing two and then when we were only missing one, I said, you know, I'm just gonna. I'm not gonna do it because I didn't want to have to flip a coin.
Got it.
So.
Nathan, thank you for having the conversation. I appreciate it.
Of course. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you as well, Michael. Appreciate it and everyone else.
Yeah, thank you, Nathan. Thank you.
So Michael has a copy of that. We'll we'll, I'll connect with him and. And we'll get a letter out to to that effect that mentions those plans and indicates that per eighty one oh, we do not, the board does not believe that they are. You know, meets the requirements for submission and. You know, meets the requirements for submission and, uh. And go from there. Send it off. I'll get with Carrie and get that off by registered mail. All right, that's, uh. That's good. That's that's another big one off the agenda here. Okay. Uh, still on the subject of preliminary plans, uh, we've, we had some, uh. So we received these plans a year ago and we took the same line we're taking on these ones and there was some talk on the board about sending those checks back. Uh, we also have checks from this January. Uh, and presumably we have some checks from now, so none of them have been cashed, uh, and, uh. I was going to. Suggest that we send back the ones from twenty twenty three. I was gonna suggest that we cash the ones from early, wait, I'm sorry. Yeah, cast ones from January twenty twenty four since we did, uh. Review those, but you know, I I don't know, I, you know, I'm a little bit. I did reach out to Donna on this and she didn't really. Give me much of an answer, um. Uh, we do keep the plans on record. I I don't know if it's, uh. I don't know where we come down on this. Michael, you have a?
It it feels like it should be in parallel to. How we perceive the plan, so for. The ones that we sent the letters for, so you know, a year ago and and the one we just discussed. When we're not recognizing those as being submitted, so we should return the checks. For the one where they sent in with the priority mail, ultimately they got recognized because we we nodded towards the priority mail. So it's just like those we keep.
Right.
So if if we return the checks, I think we should do it registered mail.
That's fine, that's fine, we can do that. Carrie?
Um, so I have to see who the checks were written from, but if they're. So last time I sent out. The letter. I believe going through the sh- by the shoots berry, was it? Uh, regulations of governing subdivision. I think that's where Grace pointed out to me that a copy of the plans have to be. Sent back along with the letter, which is what I did registered mail last time. And then I sent just the letter itself to W D Coles. Um, now, if the checks are from W D Coles. I should send it with that. Just the letter and not. The registered mail packet that's going to the, um, not manufacturer, um, consultant. Correct?
Yeah, another one from twenty twenty three or from Coles, the ones from twenty, early twenty twenty four are from a different. It's from one of the companies that is a. We're trying to lease with Coles, it wasn't our Levesque Associates, um. But those would be the ones that we would cash, those are the ones we actually reviewed, and then I don't know what the checks are, uh, in this round where they're from, but we can. We can figure that out. We can make a phone call if we have to. So, you know, I I bet, basically, you know, I think that, uh, we have some clear direction, um. You know, and we can, we can have a a motion and a vote just to. Make it, uh, official, right? So, uh, you know, the motion I would like to hear is that, uh. You know, um. You know, what the practice the board is gonna adopt will be to, uh, return checks if if we're not, um. Recognizing a preliminary subdivision plan as having been properly submitted. And that, uh, if if we do, uh, recognize it, that we will, you know, accept the fee.
So moved.
Uh, second? Anyone?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Ashley. Uh, our discussion. Okay. Uh, Pycroft?
Hi.
Take care.
Hi.
Bressler?
Hi.
Weston?
Hi.
Yeah, I'm a nine. All right, okay, thank you, everyone. Um, lots of just clear this up and, uh. And move on. Okay. Uh, uh, next on the agenda, I have community engagement and, uh, you know, one one of the things I, uh. Re- reason I put this on there, you know, was. You know, we we had a public hearing for some of our zoning amendments, um. Was it last month, the month before, and, uh, you know, no one from the public showed up. Uh, probably not, not the first time this happened. So. I I would like to attempt to have, uh, to to foster, um. Some higher levels of 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 engagement, uh, with the work we're doing on this board. And, uh, again, you know, this is this is good because, you know, uh, like I, like I said at the at the beginning of the meeting, I thought this was the last meeting of, uh, the fiscal year. Um, but apparently we've got one more meeting and then, uh. We're in the next fiscal year, so, uh. Kind of gives a little bit more time, but I just. You know, I, um. I I have a kind of like the bare bones of a plan, uh, which I will send to the board, uh, we could probably touch on it, uh. Next month, maybe a little bit, and then, uh, probably. Uh, maybe finalize it right in, uh, in July, right? And, uh, you know, basically, I I would like to, you know, send out a town announce, right, shortly after the beginning of the fiscal year. And say, hey, you know, it's a new fiscal year, right? Uh, you know, we have these, uh, board members elected, you know, next member is up for election, the following election are gonna be. You know, these members and, you know, these are some of the things we're looking at doing, uh, the, you know, here's some of the ongoing, you know, here's what we have for an ongoing project, you know, here's, uh. You know, what we're gonna be looking at doing this year for, you know, legislative agendas and or policy agendas or what have you. Um, and, uh, just saying, you know, we look forward to giving you updates throughout the year as, uh, you know, we navigate these issues, right? And then there's the newsletter, which goes out, uh, fall, winter and spring. And I've been kind of seeing these like, you know, going by, going by, and I haven't quite, uh. You know, made anything happen with them, but I I would like to, uh, you know, have a planning board entry going to these, uh, these newsletters. With, uh, updates, uh, on what's going on, just so that people are seeing, uh, are seeing it. And, you know, there's probably a little more, but, uh, Michael, you have your hand up. What what do you got?
Yeah, well, I think doing stuff for the town newsletter makes a lot of sense, um, you know, so. People read them, you know, I mean, it's it's it's, when I've been chair of committees, I I've always tried to do it, so I think that's helpful. The other thing I would add without getting into the weeds is. When we do public hearings, we do it by the book in terms of notification, so we put it in the newspaper. No one's reading notices in the paper, you know, so if you want to do a town announce saying, hey, we're doing a public hearing. Someone's gonna show up.
That's that's another part of the plan is to to do, uh, to utilize town announce when when we know there's gonna be a public hearing.
Yeah, and I think the only thing we could discuss next time, which is. Always part of the conversation, no one ever agrees, um, whether I've been. On select board, school committee or, you know. Is next door, you know, and so because next door is privately owned, it's not, you know, so that's a different thing than town announce. So we can discuss it next time. Some people say, well, there's a lot of traffic on next door, so if you want to have people see it, you put it there. Other people, myself included, say, you know, someone else can repost it to. But not the committee shouldn't do it, you know, so but that's a conversation for the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I I was gonna suggest that, you know, things just kind of be. Uh, plastered on there, but I suppose, uh. Now I'd like to see how, you know, I mean, it's, uh. You know, it's for, from my view, it would be kind of like instant, uh, feedback. Um, you know, up or down, right, but just, you know, you get some comments and it it's not, uh. It's not the best, um. Way of, uh. You know, getting public opinion.
Well, the tricky part, if you do next door, because I know the select board has talked about this when I was on and since then, is that. If a town board puts something itself on next door. P- members of the board really can't comment on it on next door, so it's sort of this weird dynamic because. People expect an exchange and all of a sudden you're putting it out there, you're not commenting, so it's it's a very weird thing.
The the that's that's a good point and 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 that would be true and that would be, uh. You know, it it would be necessary to, uh. To make sure that, uh, in any parts of this, we would, uh, stand the right side of open meeting law, of course. So, and then, you know, I also was kind of thinking, I mean, and this is a lot, I don't know about this part, but, uh, you know, possibly, you know. I don't know if there's like a blog feature, uh, with the website, but, you know, to just kind of like, you know, say, hey, you know, uh. You know, last night's meeting, we, uh, we we were, we rejected the plans and we, uh. You know, we appointed so and so as associate member, you know, we appointed so and so to fill this vacancy, you know, just kind of like. The the high level, not 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 the minutes. You know, not having to wait to go through a two hour YouTube video, just a quick bump up up of like some stuff, um. But that might be a little bit ambitious.
And and dicey, I think it's a. It's, uh, if you just do the facts. It's straightforward, it's like when you get. Anywhere off the facts.
Uh, well, no, that would, it would have to be just the fact, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, and, uh. Yeah, I remember in the in the bad old days. In the early two thousands. Several rounds of disagreement at the regional school committee, uh, when I was on that, you know, there was active blogging happening. With active opinion, you know, and so. Unfortunately, the state has never kept up with social media, and so. You can exchange ideas on a blog, uh, among members, because one person posts an idea and everyone else sees it. So, you know, it it's it really sticking to the facts, it it. But we don't have, we can take up time.
No, the the point of it was just to be strictly a recap of what took place in open meeting.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, so basically, I I have a kind of a bare bones document, I didn't. Get it out for this meeting, but I just wanted to. Put it in your ears, uh, and I'll get something out to you before we meet next time. We've had some discussion points. Um, now that we can think about. And, uh. You know, it's something I would like to try and do and and at the very minimum, you know, maybe hit some of those, uh. Our our town, uh, news, right? And 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 a town announce for the opening of the fiscal year and for when we're having, uh. Um, public hearings, which, you know, I I do feel badly about that I haven't been doing already, but it's, uh, you know, I think. Kind of having it, uh. You know, bringing it to the board and if if we can all at least get on the same page with at least part of that, hopefully that bare bones part. And, um, get a little bit of momentum in that direction. I I think that would be good for, uh, for our little local democracy. So. Um, for better or worse. All right, um. Yeah, I I think, uh. You know, in in the long run, having a citizenry that is, uh, you know, informed and engaged about local politics is is good for, uh. Democracy. That's, uh, that's that's my line.
And in Shute Sperry now, it's not even a citizenry. It's a voting residency.
That that's that's, uh, that's a good point, that's a good point, that's, uh, yeah, I didn't mean to, uh.
No, that's fine. It's it's our new thing that got passed.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it it's the inhabitants of, uh, of Shute Sperry. The public body, okay. Um. So, and 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 moving on to that, you know, uh, we're looking at fiscal, uh. Uh, twenty four goals, uh, you know, and. Now, I'm I'm amiss that, uh. That Robert's not here tonight because obviously I think, uh, one of them. Uh, we'll probably try and get back into the tiny houses, affordable houses conversation. I, uh. I talked to Mateo, uh, briefly at town meeting, you know, he's he chairs the, uh. Community preservation, um, committee, right, um. You know, just kind of give him a heads up. I I like to talk to him, so I'm gonna try and speak with him, you know, uh. Read on the select board, has a lot of experience with affordable housing, uh. So, you know, that's that's one thing I would I would like to. Try and get some conversations going around. I know, uh, I know Robert Raymond had, uh, kind of brought that agenda item in the past and. You know, I would like to ask folks to, you know, uh, board members to just kind of reflect on this, uh, for our next meeting. Um, you know, is there anything that, uh, you would like to, uh, have the board work on a little bit, um. In some way, shape or form over the next fiscal year. Uh, so that's that's homework for you. Um, does anyone have anything comes up, uh, now?
Only one small point. Next fiscal year is twenty five. We're in twenty four.
Oh, did I say, yeah, okay, well, fiscal year twenty five is what we're looking at, yeah. Oh, I said.
It's confusing, don't sweat it.
Yeah, you know, and I I I do also want to put the agendas out sooner. Um, I I I'm, I think I'm gonna, uh. Make, uh, the second Monday of the month a regularly scheduled meeting. Right, and then just kind of have them up there and, uh. You know, I don't know, obviously, uh. Sometimes things come in right right up to forty eight hours or whatnot, but it'll be good to kind of. Want to try and get that up a little bit sooner. All right. Uh, does anyone have any, uh, anything they want to, uh, us to consider for fiscal year twenty five goals?
How about at least one in-person meeting?
Yes, yes. Absolutely. That's a, that's, thank you, Steve. I, uh. I wanted to do that as well. Let's, uh, let's shoot for, um. August. I would say July, but that's just right out of the gate a little too hard. We'll go for August, how's that?
Okay.
Uh, Carrie?
Will it be hybrid?
What's that?
Will it be hybrid?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
And, you know, if, uh, if if it's, uh. Yeah, we we can. And we can discuss that, Carrie, if, uh. Yeah, we'll, we we can discuss that, Carrie, um, further, if, uh, if you have these to be remote on it, but it 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 would have to be hybrid because, uh. I believe that's the new requirement. Um, well, I couldn't be mistaken on that, but, uh, that's, I think the new norm is if you are meeting in person. Uh, having it as a remote, uh, or as a hybrid, uh, in-person remote meeting. You know, part of the, originally that was is a requirement of, uh. The number of people that could. Get into the space in town hall was limited due to, uh, the public health, uh, concerns. Is, uh, the pandemic was, uh, still going on, and at this point, I think it's more of an accessibility issue. Uh, to make it just easily accessible for the public and not have to drive to town hall or go to a meeting. Which I think makes total sense. So that's, uh, good. Anyone else? Michael?
Just a quick thing on that, this is jumping ahead, but I think the conversation of format of meetings might come up at the all boards meeting. So to be discussion, I mean, the one thing that struck me and I worked the select board a few months ago was. I've usually thought about Zoom meetings as making accessibility greater. Because people who have, you know, mobility issues or transportation issues or just getting out at night is hard. The inverse, although. Gail Hunter says that. I think it's like ninety eight percent of town has access to, you know, our internet. For those people who can't access the internet, or if we just do all online, it actually is exclusionary. So it's it's like it goes, it cuts both ways. It's an interesting conversation to have, so hopefully. I I won't be there on the eleventh, but hopefully that's a conversation you guys have.
Thank you. Well, you know, just, I guess that would be just a note, there's a, uh. To skip ahead to that, you know, all board meeting on, uh, June eleventh. So, uh. I don't know if I, did I forward that email to the group? All right, well, I'll, uh.
You did, I definitely, I mean, I don't know if you did or it just came to us. Naturally anyways, but I'm aware of it.
Okay. Um, so. That's, that's, uh, that's open, uh. That's that's uh, that's open, um, I don't know if I'll be able to go to it at the moment, uh, but you know, just kind of heads up on that. Uh it'll be great if anyone can go and encourage it, um. And if there's any additional communications, I'll uh, I'll make sure I forward those along to everyone.
I think the email says that they need someone from each board to be there.
Yeah, they they want someone, they want at least one person from each board, but more are welcome.
So should one of us volunteer?
You do want to volunteer?
Uh, that's tough timing for me, with grades due, I'd prefer not to, but.
Okay.
I probably am open then, lacrosse ends this week, so that's good.
Okay, uh, anyone else interested in going, off the top of your head?
Six o'clock, six o'clock, I might be able to go, I'm not, I'm not certain at this point, but I have it on my calendar.
Okay. Yeah, we we we. On board meeting. Well, you know, uh, while our, our meeting uh. Yeah, I don't have the timer, so uh. Yeah, I I don't think, I don't know if we're gonna uh. Just on that right now, we've got a few people who's interested, that's good, we can lock, we can try and lock that down over email between now and then. Michael, you got some uh state permitting stuff you want to talk about?
Yeah, just, I think quasi briefly, um, so I sent out something. The email, but I just wanted to back it up and talk in open meeting about it, so. All all of our delightful conversations about subdivision plans earlier, I would say. Could be moot in the near future, uh and so the the high level takeaway is. Uh, the state is basically moving to consolidating permitting decisions. Around all clean energy slash electric decarbonization projects in the state. Um which is a huge shift, and you know, my personal opinion, really problematic, but um. The two moving parts there, there is the governor had a commission on energy siting and permitting. That came out with the recommendations end of March, I think it was March twenty ninth, um. And I did a analysis of that to understand, and you know, there are some good things, there are some bad things, some things that need to be. Um resolved, but um, in some regards, that's less important, because it's just a a com- a commission to the governor. Uh, the thing that's more alarming, but in the same direction is what I did send you guys, which is H four five oh one. Which is the climate bill, so it's an omnibus climate bill, and what that means is there's all these. Different climate related bills that were in the House and in the Senate, um and they get bundled, you know. Almost all of them come through the Joint Committee on Telecommunications, Utilities and Energy, or TUE, they get bundled together and. I think it was a couple of weeks ago, uh, Senate President said, we are going to have a climate bill by the end of the legislative session, which is July thirty first. Um, there isn't a Senate bill yet, but the House one is out. The thing that's really concerning, um and in the thing I sent you, you can see it, I know it's very dense, but I spent a few weeks. Reading it, looking at it, I talked to the aide, to the the representative who's the chair of TUE. Um, but basically, they define. Electric decarbonization projects to be everything, so it's solar, it's batteries, it's hydro, it's wind, it's transmission. And it's everything else that helps for the the decarbonization goals of the Commonwealth, so there's nothing not included, and unlike. The governor's commission, there's no size parameter, so it could be a a little teeny weeny thing, it could be a huge thing. Everything goes to this one state office to consolidate, um, which on a practical level, it was crazy. And also, I think on a, uh, I don't know, on a philosophical or ideological. Policy approach, it makes no sense, because basically strips out municipal role. And and includes not just the planning board, but the ZBA, the CONCOM, and the Board of Health, so any local permitting that would happen. Gets taken away from the municipalities and is decided uh at the state level. You know, one aside from just sort of the objection that we, you know, we as a municipality get put into an advisory role. There's there's a part of that in there that is just pr- practically makes no sense to me, so. You know, there's three hundred fifty one municipalities in Massachusetts, if they're all sending projects to this one office. Constructive approval happens after twelve months, so there's no way this office is going to be able to turn around. Projects that are coming at it of all sizes, uh and so what'll end up happening is projects is going to come into the hopper, not get addressed. And come out, and the thing about constructive approval is that it, they get approved automatically as proposed. So there's no conditions, there's no negotiations, there's no tweaking to make it better, so it goes in, it comes out, whatever, um. So that's sort of the dynamic, you know, I, and you know, I've I've talked to Donna, her readers, that it's the same kind of thing that she's seeing. You know, that there's this big push, and you know, yes, we're in a climate emergency and we have to expedite. But they're looking at it as this is the solution, is to sort of take away decision making from municipalities and. Make it be a centralized um process, um, I mean, I could have a longer conversation, but what I I think, but the short version is. There's pretend, there's a possibility for partnership where we have a role, because we know the locales and we know. Uh, you know, what Shrewsbury looks like, I mean, talking to the aide of the representative, he doesn't know where Shrewsbury is. There's a high likelihood that the people in the office making the decisions not gonna know where Shrewsbury is, yet they'll be making decisions. So it's mostly a heads up, um, I mean, just as a personal thing, I've been doing. Advocacy, because I think it's just a really bad idea, and there's got to be some kind of thing in between, but I wanted to make, you know, everyone on the board aware, because. There's, there were, as I was told, there will be a climate bill, it's gonna happen, um and what it looks like. Um and what's in it is up for discussion, but I will say the two chairs, the Senate Chair. Of TUE basically thinks municipalities are NIMBYs by definition, uh and have nothing really constructive to contribute, and that the House a little bit less. So, but it's hugely concerning, um, so come August, we might be dealing with a very different playing field. Uh, so it's mostly, I wanted to just let everybody know, because this is huge, um. I don't know how much there is for us to do, I mean.
Well, Michael, it it's huge and it's going to impact disproportionately Western Mass once again.
Yes.
Because it's going to be eastern centric thinking that's going to affect the western part of this, middle and western part of the state. But it doesn't, it sounds like that writing is on the wall there, or is there anything we can, anybody can do about it?
Well, I think, you know, it's it's organizing, I mean, I think, you know, if we wanted to, the planning board could write. I was thinking about this yesterday, you know, so like, you know, I've talked to Aaron Saunders at town meeting. He agrees that the momentum's in this direction, he's trying to mitigate the damage as best he can, but uh he doesn't think he can reverse it, just make it a little bit better, but he gets it. Uh, I think Joe Comerford is working to help, you know, the language as well. So I think it's really sort of advocating in Boston with TUE, uh, I actually was thinking going. I want to actually focus my stuff on the Speaker of the House and the Senate President, because that's really where the power is, um. So I think if a board, if we wanted to do something, we could, you know, write a letter of concern. Uh, I didn't, I didn't want to be presumptuous, so I didn't prepare anything in that regard, um today was really sort of heads up, but just to give you a sense. You know, I was on WHMP last week talking about this, I'm working on a letter to the editor, I'm going to set to the Gazette, to the Recorder. Um, and then there's people, other, you know, there's folks across the state who are dealing with it, but uh, it's, it's sort of like. Municipalities need to raise their hand and say, yes, we actually have a role in this, um, I don't. Unless the legislature recognizes that, I mean, we really get seen as as, you know. Naysayers in the process, I mean, I'll give you two examples, then I'll shut up, so they, the this, the governor's commission had. Public comment, you could write things in, but they also had a session, and there were a couple of people from the Cape who said. You know, all you're looking at is development by private developers, you know, and if you actually work with the municipalities. And you're worried, and you're interested in quick deployment, if you gave municipalities, all three hundred fifty one of. Money to put solar on their town halls, schools, BPWs, highway. Uh, put money on canopies for parking lots, you would get deployment across the state, you know, and they're publicly owned. You know, Shrewsbury would do it in a second if we had money for it, we've been trying to through ECAC, um. You know, like, there's other ways to think about this where it doesn't disempower municipalities, um, so, but yeah, I mean, my current thinking, Steve, it. It fees, I looked it up yesterday, construction on the Quabin started nineteen twenty six, so almost a hundred years later. It's the same kind of thing, and that was to feed water for Boston.
Yeah, no, you took the words right out of my mouth, I thought, I thought, oh, it's Quabin all over again, you know, that's exactly right. Um, well, I, if you want to take a fir-, if everyone else agrees, and I I would be happy to work on that letter with you. And I don't know if the planning board, if it can get more weight by having other planning boards in other towns sign on to it, or can we get? Can we get a bigger ball rolling than just our little planning, you know, Shrewsbury's planning board?
I, you know, I, I might, I haven't talked to Jeff Lacy about it, uh, you know, because he's he's tapped in, the MMA. Mass Municipal Association, they're surprisingly not worried, it seems, I I don't understand. Um, they were, they had a, they had a representative on the, on the governor's commission. Interestingly, the only municipal perspective was acting, uh acting, so no one from Western Mass was on the governor's commission.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do you think there's been a bunch of lobbying that's led to this? I mean, like, do you think even with the MMA?
Oh, I I I'm sure, I mean, all the developers want, you know, to be able to go where they want. And so, yeah, I think so.
How many people are part of the commission that's gonna approve or not approve these permits, you know?
It's, well, it's, it's, it, oh, it's, so it's, it's the state office, it hasn't. Currently, there's the EFSB, which is the Energy Facility Siting Board, and. They deal with projects that I think are a hundred megawatts and bigger, so the battery project in Wendell is. The developer, I don't know if they increased the size, but they made it such that if it goes to EFSB, you can bypass local ordinances. That's exactly what happened to Wendell, is they passed uh something about batteries, and then they, the project is big enough. So my read is that either it's going to be the current EFSB that gets empowered to all, do all this stuff, and maybe they add staff or whatever. Uh, or they create something similar, um that has the same function, um you know, there's there's some. There's some good things in there, like if they didn't just, if they weren't taking away municipal. Uh, decision making, you know, there is a nod to environmental protection, and there isn't a nod to public health protection. The the other interesting Eastern Mass thing, just while I'm on my soapbox, is. To the politicians' credit, they heard, they got enough pushback about environmental justice communities, so, you know, there's some language about protecting. And do like environment impact if it's in a certain distance from an EJ community, but there's no reference to rural. So, you know. You could plop something down that endangers the environment or the public health in a rural community, it doesn't trigger the same thing as. You know, the context that it would have for an EJ community, so there's just like, there's blinders in terms of how they're responding, and. I mean, what would be really nice is if they didn't race to judgment, they actually had a real discussion, but that's what I'll get off my soapbox, Nathan, thank you for the time.
I I was actually just gonna note that uh no part of Shrewsbury is considered meeting any other criteria for being an environmental justice committee. Which is uh, there's an income criteria, a language criteria, and a, I believe, a minority uh criteria. Uh, minority criteria, so, um, we don't check any of those boxes here.
Right, I if I could say a few words, so one is that, um. I talked to someone who's very involved with Wendell, and they wanted me to come in and and talk to them, I respectfully declined, but I would imagine that Wendell is very interested in. Uh would be very interested in this, a combined letter, certainly, because they're, they're facing a huge issues with solar development. Also, Michael, if I can add to, I I I have the articles that you, uh, not articles, the information that you wrote, I went through them a few times. You also, um, what Michael's work is, um, if you didn't have a chance to look at, it's just incredible and, uh and um. Very, very well done, I wanted to add too to um, uh, that. Uh municipalities are given like an advisory role, uh role, rather than they. You know, they can, they can advise, but they can't really determine what happens, so that's another thing that uh was really significant in the language, it basically. Um eliminates all control that you mean, municipal, just about all control that municipalities have regarding solar. Or lithium ion battery regulation, you know, so that's a huge thing, it's, these laws are are tremendously damaging to um. I think they would be tremendously damaging to a lot of towns and especially in rural Massachusetts, and that's where they make the most money. Because the land is cheap, um so they take huge amounts of land and they can, excuse me. Uh hu- do huge solar projects which are cheap, I mean, if you try to buy land in, you know, in Newton, you can't. But in Shrewsbury, the land is cheap and um, and I'm sure there's been a lot of lobbying, a lot of um. Attorneys have gone through the these laws and added um, and and made it difficult, in my judgment, for. Um municipalities such as us to have any say whatsoever in terms of regulating solar. Um, solar projects or lithium battery ions, ion storage projects, so it's really written to uh help. Large landowners um, um make money, in my judgment.
In other states, so I think it is, it's consistent.
But I was gonna ask if, like, how this looks like nation nationwide. And I'm wondering if there's any lawsuits either, if any of the municipalities are suing, or if there have been any lawsuits. Like even back in the times of the Quabin, did anybody sue to try and make it stop?
I I was reading Wikipedia last night about the Quabin, you know, and I think there was a lot of local objection, especially by the four towns that got flooded. Uh, but those, you know, you don't write the laws, whoever writes the laws sort of makes, it's those, got the power there.
It's uh, in my judgment, it's money and lobbyist driven, uh these laws, and um, they're gonna be, um, in my judgment. It looks like they're gonna be devastating for um towns such as us.
Well, I'd be happy to have a a letter from the planning board stating our our position on this.
Well, I'm happy to draft one, um.
Thank you.
Yeah, and as I said, Michael, I'd I'd be happy to do what we've done in the past.
Cool.
Um, I can find the um, the people uh that would be interested in um joining in Wendell, certainly. I have access to that uh that whole population, not the whole population, but I have access to the the movers and shakers in Wendell.
Yeah, and I've been in touch with Molly, who's their planning board chair over the past, so if we do something, I could also send it out to them. I forget her last name.
Maybe, maybe we can, if we can, if we knew, know people on other planning boards in other towns. We can get the ball rolling through a network, I don't know how best to do that, but. If we keep that in the front of our minds when we talk with other towns.
Yeah, right, Judy Eisman, who's the planning board chair for Pella, has been part of these conversations as well, um. So. Yeah, it's 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 hard not to get pessimistic, because I think we need to do what we need to do to sort of have our voices heard. But I think we're already put in a box, it's sort of, you know, it's, it. If someone sees you as a NIMBY, it's hard to sort of get them to think that you actually have, you're actually constructively engaging or trying to, you know, with with authenticity.
Um, and I I I'd also like to add something else, I mean. Um, and I, I, I'd also like to add something else, I mean, I don't know if they fully realize that indeed. I mean, there are eight towns that border the Quabin, which is their water, you know, it's one of the largest unfiltered. Um, water supplies in the country, so, I'm supporting three million people in Boston. I mean, New York is larger, their unfiltered water supply, I think, is nine million. But this, um, Boston could not exist without, uh, Quabin really, and, um. And all we're trying to do is to protect, um, one of the eight, one of the eight towns that borders that we're trying to protect the water that feeds Boston. You know, this, um. Lithium battery storage leaks, you know, cobalt ions and lithium ions and chromium ions, and these are all toxic to, uh, water life. And, um, I don't think they realize the significance of, um. Not allowing municipalities that know the tributaries that go into the Quabin. Uh, not allowing us the, um, any say in terms of protecting the Quabin reservoir, which is their. Uh, life supply really in Boston, so it's, um. They're being, um, influenced, heavily influenced by the money that comes in, in my judgment, money comes in through, um. You know, lobbyists and, um, and lobbyists aren't interested in, um. In, you know, the future events that could happen and would pollute the, uh, water of, um, of Boston and municipal. The municipalities surrounding Boston, anyway, I'll be quiet now.
Well, as a tangible, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ashley.
Just really quick, not that any of us could probably do this, but great opportunity for some investigative journalism. You know, Boston Magazine, obviously the Gazette, if any of you have journalists in your life, could plant the seed.
Well, I, this weekend, I did send the thing I sent you guys to the editor chief of the Gazette, so, you know, maybe they'll take notice. Um, I think tangibly, it sounds like if people are okay with it, I'll take a stab at it, then have some, you know, I'll send it out. Um, and get feedback, I know Steve has said he would as well, and then. We can just, we could discuss it and, you know, approve whatever version if we want to on, at June tenth, which is, you know, it's. Not quite the end of the legislative session, so I think, you know, it could have some impact. And we can share it out to other planning boards, as I think Steve had suggested, if that makes sense, but. I'm happy to write a draft and then share it out between now and our next meeting.
Well, thank you for doing that, Michael.
Do we need to make a formal motion for Michael to do this? Nathan?
You can do whatever you need to make a motion.
You're recusing yourself, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not, no, I mean, you know, I, I, I'm, um, I'm not gonna participate in the discussion, discussion, but you know, if you want to, uh, figure out a way to move forward, whether it's, uh. You know, having Michael draft something, or, you know, whatever, I mean, you know, we, you know, call a meeting in the next couple of weeks if you want, you know, uh.
Well, I'll make a motion to, um, that the planning board, um. And let Michael draft, uh, an initial letter in response to this, uh, legislative issue.
On behalf of the planning board, right?
Yeah, yes, on behalf of the planning board, thank you.
I second it.
All right, uh, now we have a, any discussion on this? Um, I I guess I would, I would clarify, Michael, to, uh. Draft a letter on behalf of the planning board, i- is there gonna be, is this to be brought back to a subsequent meeting or to be, uh, okay? Um, all right, then I'll call the roll, uh, Hi Craft?
Aye.
Uh, Dickara?
Aye.
Wrestler?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
And on this one, I will abstain.
Uh, Michael, if you want to send that to me, I'd be happy to, um, to go over it and contribute whatever I can to it.
Yeah, I'll do what I, you know, have done in the past, I'll send it up to everybody and they just reply to me separately, so we don't get in the way of OML.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the time, I appreciate it.
So wait, just to clarify, if I reply to you alone and don't reply to everybody, then it's not a violation of open meeting law?
Yeah, because I'm, I'm, I write it, I'm sending it out to you guys, and then it, so there's not really deliberation, I'm just. Yeah, I'm just gonna edit it, and then we'll discuss it, the next open meeting law, so we won't have to decide anything, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good thing to kind of, uh, clarify, right, a lot of the time, you know, and, and in this case, Michael is, uh. You know, yeah, he's writing it, right, uh, oftentimes it'll be the chair, right, uh, you know, the chair might send something out, or, you know, really any member of the board. Or, uh, yeah, you know, communications funnel through a single person. That is either the chair or someone designated for something, or someone who's leading a particular initiative. And that's, uh, one, one way we can get things done, so that's a good practice, um, to be able to. You know, have some kind of organization, um, that doesn't violate open meeting law, doesn't, uh, result in a quorum going between a. Uh, communication, uh, going among a quorum of, of the board, of the public body, right?
If I can add something that actually Michael taught me to Ashley, um. We can do that, uh, because we have seven members on the board, so two people are are not a quorum. However, the select board cannot do that, because two people would be a quorum on the select board. So we have the ability to talk between us, um, they do not, um, because I think it would violate open meeting law, that's my understanding that. Michael's, what Michael said to me, I don't know if that's correct.
Well, it's, there's, there's two parts to it, so in terms of actually discussing, you know, so actually, three of us could talk, because we're still not a quorum. Um, you know, I would, oftentimes, people who knew the boards get told, you can't talk to each other, which is not true, you know. So it's under a quorum, one can talk about stuff, this is a slightly different in the sense that, you know. Because of open meeting law, we're not as efficient as we otherwise would in real life, you know, so you can't use Google Docs, for example, you can't use all these collaborative. Tools that otherwise people would do to move a project forward, so if a, of a. Board or a committee designates one person to be the lead, there, the important part is, one person can't be a, a subcommittee. So subcommittees also have to, or work groups also have to comply with open meeting law, so. Lots of people have done this wrong in the past, I know I've been part of it as well, but, um. One person by definition, so like when we do policies, the idea would, you know, if I take the lead on a policy, for example. I can write it, I can send it out to you all, you can comment, and then the next time we meet. I'll have processed those comments and bring it forth and discuss it in an open meeting, so the fact that we're discussing it in an open meeting. It's a way of sort of doing some processing of information and sharing information, but only through. That person who gets designated, then you bring it back and have a public conversation and agree to change or adopt or whatever it's gonna be, so it's. One of the rare ways we could actually advance, because, I mean, you can't write anything as a group in an open meeting. We take the whole meeting, it's sort of, so this is probably the only way to do it.
Remember, another important thing about open meeting laws is, you know, it's, uh, what is your intent, right? So if, uh, if you're doing things where, you know, when you think of it, how, how you might look at it if you were one of the attorneys. In the, uh, in the, uh, Attorney General's Office, right? Um, or the, uh, was it the State Ethics Board, I think, is it the State Ethics Board that does this one?
It's Attorney General.
Attorney General, okay, yeah, yeah, that's what I thought, uh, State Ethics Board is, uh.
Conflict of interest, yeah.
Yeah, um, but anyway, you know, if you think of it, how, how they might approach it, and, and, you know. And if you're doing that, and, and what you're doing seems like you're intentionally trying to circumvent open meeting law, right, then. Uh, that's gonna be problematic, right, but if you're, like Michael said, trying to process information. Um, so that you can have a productive session and open, a, a, a productive meeting and open session, that's okay. All right, um, you know, last, uh, thing we have is just that, uh. Review the town meeting, I'm gonna do this real quick, we had two zoning amendments, they both passed with flying colors, that was the, uh, lighting bylaw in our, um. Omnibus, uh, zoning amendment, uh, use table, special permit conditions and. Home rule for associate members. And, uh, that's, that, I want to leave it at that, we have, we also had the, the ESS, uh. General bylaw, which was actually presented, uh, by Michael on behalf of the select board, but did come through the planning board. Also passed, uh, with flying colors, um, so I'm gonna leave that at that. And, uh, we are eight fifty three, um, so this, uh, did go a little longer than. I hope, but it is short of the two hour, which I like, I, I really don't want our meetings to be going over two hours, so, uh, you know, we, uh. We won't hold it against Steve if he, uh, has a comment, uh, a motion to adjourn, anyone, a motion to adjourn? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. I'll call the roll. He's, uh, he's abstaining, uh, Weston?
Aye.
Aye, okay, Hi Craft?
Aye.
Dickara?
Aye.
Steve, last chance, do you want to vote to adjourn?
Aye.
All right, and I'm gonna, thank you, everyone.
Nathan, thank you for all of your wonderful work, Michael, thank you, incredible, um, uh, we appreciate all of your efforts.
Absolutely, and the next meeting is gonna be, uh, six ten, Monday, seven o'clock.
Sounds good.
Mark your calendar. Good night.
We all soon, good night.
Good night, good night.